A call to the meeting in order will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Gary.
Here.
Grinberg.
Here.
Pepcorn.
Here.
Strand.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here. This has been a tough week. I need to begin this meeting with the acknowledgement of profound sadness being felt throughout our metro area over the loss of Fargo resident Savannah LaFontaine-Grewin. Savannah was taken from this community far too soon and in an utterly reprehensible manner. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family and friends of Savannah. It is in moments like these that we fully appreciate the tight bond uniting our community during the times of crisis and distress. As your mayor and as our commissioners, I am very moved by the outpouring of support shown during the search efforts and the willingness of our people to volunteer to help others. Instances like this do not define Fargo. Fargo is instead defined by the spirit of resilience and support in the aftermath of circumstances like this. In honor of Savannah, her friends and family, please stand and join me in observing a moment of silence. I would also like to express my appreciation to the Fargo Police Department and its local, state, and national partners who are working side by side in this large effort. Chief Dave Todd and I are incredibly grateful for the united response efforts we had, and Chief Todd didn't get much sleep last week, but very much glad that you're on board to help out with this. Thank you, Chief. Here comes the library again. They always come at us every week. It's estimated 500 children and families attended the Carlson's Library Solar Eclipse Viewing Party last week. 500 children got to watch it. Bruce Grubb was almost blinded by it, but he had his glasses on, thank God. Registration for the library's weekly fall Storytime series for toddlers, preschoolers, and families is now open. A free 14-week series starts September 11th. Storytimes are offered at all three library locations and are a great way to introduce the children to reading and to the library. Some children are in school, right, Tony? Your son, right?
Right.
Planning. This is really interesting. Employment in the Fargo metro area continues to increase. The North Dakota Job Service data shows employment of 143,700 in July of 2017, and this one-month increase of 1,300 from June of 2017, and an increase of 3,000 from July of 2016. So people continue to be getting jobs and working in the community. We're very pleased that building permits for three large projects were issued in August. They include the $16 million project by NDSU Foundation Housing, and a $15 million project by Mid-America Steel, and a $31 million project by Border States Electric. So we're very pleased that those are going forward. Wastewater. Not everybody looks at wastewater the same way. Since late 2008, the wastewater utility has operated and maintained an effluent reuse facility. Every day, 2 million gallons of treated wastewater is diverted from the facility for further treatment by a combination of chemicals, microfiltration, and reverse osmosis to produce high-quality water, not drinking water, but industrial-use water. The water is produced and then pumped 26 miles west for use of the Thorlson Ethanol Plant in Castleton. Following a recent expansion of the ethanol plant, the effluent reuse facility has produced a record water amounts of 36 to 40 million gallons for the three consecutive months this past summer. Since 2008, the facility has produced 2.8 billion gallons of treated wastewater for the ethanol plant, eliminating the use of surface water or aquifers and being very cognitive of the environmental concerns. The partnership has also produced over $7 million in new revenue to the city of Fargo utilizing water that otherwise would have been discharged to river. Great idea.
That's a great plan.
Great plan. Health. Fargo-Cass Public Health recently announced the availability of limited number of mini-grants for the area work sites to promote breastfeeding in the workplace. The mini-grants, up to $500 each, support recipients to achieving a designation of being infant-friendly at the work site. The funds support businesses in providing a private and comfortable environment for the mothers. Two-day, 30-area work sites have achieved this designation. The deadline for this is September 30th. This next one's kind of interesting. I know Tony Grinberg will be interested in this because he's always wanting to be fit. But Fit Small American has just named North Dakota as the best state to survive the next recession. And Fargo is the best city in North Dakota to survive a recession in their newest guide. So best states to survive a recession, definitive ranking of all 50 states. In the article, they state Fargo is the home of Microsoft and Case New Holland. The city contributed $15.35 billion to the state's economy in 2015, boistered by contributions from agriculture and technology and the oil boom in the West. The city also has high-quality skilled workforce, with 34% of its population holding college degrees, keeping the unemployment rate as low as 2.3%. So that's a pretty good award, don't you think?
I'd agree. A lot has happened positive since Commissioner Strand and I were elected.
All the hard work by the commissioners before that, I think. Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August 14, 2017 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, any changes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 1 through 30?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Strand first and Grinberg second. Roll call, please.
Strand.
Yes.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Regular agenda. We're going to have a presentation of the Fargo policy of affordability of housing in Fargo by our fellows that have been working all summer on this. Tyrone Grandstands to introduce this, and the public is going to know that they have been working vigorously to find us affordable housing. And now have we found it?
I think so.
Oh, good.
We're here tonight.
Give us the answers.
So I just wanted to say good evening, Mayor Mahoney and Commissioners. This summer, working with Commissioner Strand and the Community Development Committee, we put together the Fargo Policy Fellowship, an innovative, intense, eight-week dive into a single important policy issue, working with university students and recent graduates. The focus of this year's fellowship was on affordability in Fargo. In this inaugural year, we worked with three fellows on this policy area, Catlin Christie, Katie Black, and Mary Bianca Fuller. The policy area of affordability was chosen based on a few factors: interviews with Roosevelt neighborhood residents, core neighborhood residents, and the work and focus of the Community Development Committee and the overlap with the work already underway in our Pilot Performance Analytics Program. Before I pass the mic over to Catlin and Mary Bianca's presentation, I want to thank these talented fellows for working hard and making our first try at this very successful. Commissioner Strand also for working closely with the fellows in his role as Chair of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Grinberg for asking for this presentation, and the mayor and all the Commissioners for giving your time very generously so that the fellows could get a good sense of where your priorities are at. So with that, I'll introduce the fellows, Catlin and Mary Bianca.
Thank you, Tyrone. If you can turn your attention to our PowerPoint. We can begin. So this summer, the three of us investigated policy around how to make Fargo more affordable. Obviously, this is a complex issue, and we spent the last six weeks exploring the very question and analyzing very possible policy responses, also known as alternatives, to consider implementing to improve affordability. We conducted numerous interviews, as you can recall, research case studies in other cities' best, in establishing criteria to objectively analyze each alternative. Today, we will share with you our baseline recommendations and the top three alternatives that emerged through this process. $13 an hour. According to the 2015 Regional Workforce Study, by 2019, Fargo is expected to fill more than 30,000 jobs, nearly half of which are projected to be low-skill service sector jobs, which pay $13 an hour. While affordability is an issue across the country, the cities that are able to tackle this more effectively will have an advantage over those who do not in terms of attracting and retaining business, talented workers, and in creating all-around thriving, healthy communities. Okay. As you can see, there are numerous methods for defining affordability. This chart shows the annual income of three different household types with adults working 40 hours a week at $13 an hour. It shows that one needs to cover the basic living expenses, according to Fargo's specific data from the MLT MIT Living Wage Calculator. We also included that it will take improving overall financial stability through saving 10% of one's living expenses to save 10% to go towards paying down debt and savings for emergencies, and does not include retirement savings. As you can see, it is really difficult, if impossible, to achieve financial stability at this wage, especially for households with children. In addition, in communities like Fargo, we take responsibility for our adults, childrens, parents, siblings, and others across the community, which often means dipping into personal savings. In summary, we interpret affordability to mean the ability to cover basic living expenses at $13 an hour, working 40 hours a week. A quote from the Regional Workforce Study says, "At the current cost of living wages, they are not high enough to sustain a household with children without another working adult, which in many cases necessitates childcare. This also makes attracting talent to the region to fill these positions very challenging." Now we'll go into our baselines. This represents a bribe, but complex themes that came up time and time again during our analyst process. This must be given attention in order to truly get at the root of the affordable issues in Fargo. Our first one is to promote land use policy for a well-designed city. Two is to further policy analysts, in specific to different demographic needs. You can read more about this in our white paper, but today we'll like to share with you three more of our specific policy alternatives. So I'll hand it over to Catlin, and she'll talk about our first one.
Thanks. So to begin, we have, number one, establishing a community land trust, also known as a CLT. So across the board, we heard loud and clear that homeownership is valued in this community. And the reality is, however, that fewer than 12% of active homelessness are priced below $150,000, according to the Regional Workforce Study. So this means that homeownership is largely inaccessible to this workforce population, but establishing a CLT could work to help that problem. So CLTs are nonprofit organizations governed by a board of CLT members, community members, and public officials. The CLT acquires property and maintains ownership of the land permanently while ownership of the house is separate. This way, homes can be purchased by lower-income households at a more affordable rate, and in return, the homeowner agrees to sell at a resale-restricted price to another lower-income buyer in the future. So this way, the homeowner is still able to build wealth from their fair share of the equity gain, while the organization is able to preserve affordability for future families to come. In this way, the CLT model is able to create a ladder to homeownership that can grow over time to meet the full need of our community. It's one of the CLT model's greatest benefits is its ability to pay forward that initial public investment and create future affordability. And others see the benefits, too. The FM Area Workforce Study specifically recommended creating a CLT in this area. And it's in line with state planning as well, as the North Dakota Housing and Finance Agency just announced a $3 million bridge loan designed to advance CLTs in the state of North Dakota. So this is one financing option that could be considered. Another that we explored would be if we were to use TIF financing, or Scattersite TIF financing, and we found that no additional subsidy would be necessary. So we conducted a sensitivity analysis using a range of construction costs, unit types, potential property values, and the resulting levels of the TIF revenue. And the results showed that the length of the TIF required would range between 10 and 15 years in most every case. And so this is obviously something to be explored, and there are other innovations for financing to consider, so we recommend that you work with the Community Development Committee staff and potential partners like the Fargo Housing and Redevelopment Authority to continue implementation.
All right. Next, we'll go into our second alternative, which is to amend tax incentive policy to require affordability. Currently, the city offers a range of tax incentives for developers like TIFs and pilots, where these programs have been successful in promoting infill development and decrease in blight. They are not necessarily being used to increase affordable housing as they were originally designed to. According to the five-year American Community Survey, 42% of renting households in Fargo expanded more than 30% of their gross income and are considered cost burdened. To help this, one option would be require developers using this program to have 20% of their units to be affordable under HUD standards at minimum. Developers can use Indy's ultimate supply of 4% low-income house tax credits to offset this cost. Alternatively, TIF and pilot dollars could be treated as investors' equity and go towards affordable measures like buying down rents. This alternative goes hand-in-hand with promoting public-private partnership while increasing how much direct benefit goes back into the community. Amending TIF/pilot policies to do this would likely not require additional funding. Planning staff has already been working with developers to get access to low-income housing tax credits, make use of tax exemption bonds financing from the North Dakota Financing Agencies, and creating partnerships between the Fargo Housing Authorities and local private developers to offset the cost of development enough to break even or better after providing low rent. The advantages of requiring affordability rather than just allowing developers to use the tax credits as they wish is that you ensure long-term mixed-income housing that can be directly attributed to public TIF and pilot investments. We recommend that discussion is continued with planning staff, the tax exemption committee, and potential partners as to how these changes can be implemented. And next, we'll have Catlin with her last alternative.
Thank you. So finally, we have increasing home retrofit assistance, because 49% of Fargo's housing stock was actually built before the advent of building and energy code. As such, home efficiency retrofits are a key part in lowering energy usage and subsequently utility costs. So these can range as much as $130 per month in the winter, and insulation of new insulation, windows, air-induced ceiling, more efficient cooling and heating systems, et cetera, can reduce household energy consumption by 20 to 40%. And this would be particularly useful in a city where natural gas consumption increases nearly 17-fold in winter months. So despite their great cost savings, one of the greatest barriers to home retrofits is the steep upfront costs, usually between $5,000 and $15,000. To mitigate this, increasing home retrofits may only require allowing access to special assessment financing, a policy which has been successfully adopted by nearly 20 cities across the country and is also known as property-assessed clean energy. So specials ensure that the investment is paid for by the owner who benefits from the lower utility costs, as opposed to following the person who made the investment. It follows the home, the investment was made to benefit. We recommend exploring this option along with other innovative financing ideas in collaboration with staff, the Community Development Committee, and potential partners like Seneca. And so in summary, here are those three alternatives ranked in order of how they fell after we evaluated them with our criteria. And so they're in order here, but it's important to note that they have the strongest public benefit when they are used altogether, and so we recommend that they all continue into the implementation process. Thank you for listening. We welcome any questions.
So we're just concerned a little bit about that, when you have feasibility, community land trust in Grand Forks, they had a lot of land down by the river they could sell. Where do you identify where we can buy land in Fargo?
Yeah, well, we have the North Dakota Housing, or Fargo Housing and Redevelopment Authority, excuse me, and they actually have 30 units in South Fargo that they've expressed interest in putting toward exactly this sort of purpose. And there's also a few different lots that Fargo has in its portfolio that could be used to be redeveloped for this purpose as well.
How many in total?
Lots that Fargo has?
Yep.
Well, we've, I mean, there's about 11, but...
11, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions by the Commissioners, Tony?
No, I've just been impressed with the work that you've done, and I think this is a model that we should take next steps with in our planning department to see if we can put a model like this together here and make a dent in the affordable housing market.
Yeah, we agree. That would be great.
Those loans have done fairly well, haven't they?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just thank you for your work on behalf of the city and for the betterment of our city, and you've both been just really diligent and on task and a pleasure to work with. Would you also extend our gratitude to Katie Black as well, because she's the third person on your team, and Chair Leadership Tyrone, and the Planning and Development, Dan, and the people in the Planning and Development Department? So good work.
Thank you.
Look forward to implementing as much of this as we can.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll go to public hearings. Item 32, application by R&amp;R LLC doing business as Reese Riley Bistro for a Class GH alcoholic beverage license at 2653 45th Street South. Steve Sprague to explain.
This one might look kind of familiar to you. About a month ago, we had Reese Riley Bistro in front of you. The application was denied. We then received an application with an additional person, a partner, and we walked through our normal process with that one, did our background check. The applicant, and this time, had some significant criminal history items that were fairly recent, and so the recommendation from the Liquor Control Board was to deny this application.
At this time as well?
This time also, yeah.
Yeah. Is anyone present who wishes to address the City Commission regarding this application? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? If they're not present, is that right? Now we'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
Move to deny.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Pepcorn? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gary.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item B, application filed by Dakota Pie doing business as Blaze Pizza for a Class GH alcoholic beverage license at 1443 42nd Street South. Steve Sprague to explain.
And this is just the 100% opposite of the previous one. We had five applicants, no criminal history, no credit history, and in fact, the investigating officer noted that three of the applicants had perfect credit scores. So the motion does come to you as a recommendation to approve.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to the City Commission regarding this application? Is anybody who wishes to speak? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
What's Blaze Pizza? You guys, anything different about Blaze Pizza?
I was unable to meet the...
Dave, is there anything special?
No idea. We'll find out.
I thought it was supposed to be like real hot for Bison players? No? Okay.
We'll see.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item C, original townsite addition, 1111 Ninth Street South, approved recommended by the Planning Commission on 8/117. It's a zoning change from multi-dwelling residential to downtown mixed-use, and it's the first reading of the rezoning ordinance. It's not Nicole Crutchfield. Don, rest to explain.
Good evening, Commissioners. Donald Kress from the Department of Planning and Development. As the mayor has stated, item 32C is a zoning change. The north 50 feet of lots 11 and 12, Block 16, original townsite, as shown on the screen here and on your screens. This property is located at 111 Ninth Street South and is located in the downtown neighborhood. The property is currently zoned MR3, multi-dwelling residential. The building on the lot, which was originally a large, single-family residence, has been most recently used as a law office. The applicant wishes to rezone the property to DMU Downtown Mixed Use to accommodate new business development. The property is bounded on the north and south by properties zoned DMU. That's the purple that you see there, Commissioners. The proposed zoning change has been reviewed by city staff and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. This recommendation is stated in your staff report and shown on the screen. The applicant, Doug Mattson, is apparently not with us here this evening. That concludes staff's presentation. Thank you, Commissioners.
Is anyone present who wishes to speak to this rezoning? Is anyone present who wishes to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Commissioner Grinberg, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Gary. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Gary.
Yes.
Strand.
Yes.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item D, Renaissance Zone project for DFI Dillard LLC for a new construction project located at 223 and 229 Robert Street North. Derek Lapointe to explain. Now, is your tie Bison, or is it the Fighting Hawk?
I think it's U and D Green.
Can't even say exciting, huh?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Yeah, we have an application for Renaissance Zone from DFI Dillard LLC. This is to construct a mixed-use commercial on the ground floor residential above. We're talking six stories in height, about 89 units on the top floors, 93,500 square feet is estimated. The request was presented in front of the Renaissance Zone Authority on August 23rd. It was unanimously approved by that authority. Just some highlights from the actual application in the building, as I just kind of scrolled through some of the pictures up on the screen. Staff did score this fairly high through our staff approval process. We scored it 96 out of 100. It did meet a lot of the goals and objectives in a Renaissance Zone plan. One of the goals of this particular block in our Renaissance is to develop housing in this area, which this project certainly does. The investment, the total investment is $13.4 million. The current true and full value of this property, which was an existing surface parking lot owned by Family Homestead, was $166,000. The estimated five-year property tax exemption is $967,471, and the five-year income tax exemption is estimated at $5,000. It should be noted, too, this property does have an existing TIF, an approved TIF on it. The TIF is in place to fund the parking garage that's directly to the south of it that the city has operated. The estimated property taxes after the five years is $200,000. With that, staff is recommending approval and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Derek, this time? Is anyone present who wishes to address the City Commission regarding this project? Is anybody who wishes to speak? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn.
Aye.
Grinberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Yes.
Gary.
No.
Mahoney.
Aye. Item 33, consider the Fifth Amendment to the Development Agreement for Block Nine Partnership LLC. City Attorney Eric Johnson to explain.
Yes, thank you. Before you is an amendment of the Development Agreement. The city and Block Nine LLC, the developer, entered into a public-private partnership in May of last year. That agreement, and most of this is laid out in my transmittal letter to you, so I won't repeat it at length, but just in summary, that agreement contemplated a number of agreements to be formulated and negotiated and discussed in some detail regarding the project. We've been working on that throughout the time since then, and the initial project deadline was a start in November, but that was probably a little unrealistic, and so we are working hard to get it to go forward this summer. Just need a little bit more time to make this come together. It is necessary for, if the city's going to be involved in this, the deadlines need to be shifted because the construction start on the project, sort of the real estate transaction that needs to take place that starts this, has to coincide with the city's sale of the bonds. That's what, part of our commitment is to finance the construction of the ramp by the sale of some bonds, and we want to know that the deal's in place at the time we go forward with the bonds. So the two things need to meet, need to go forward together, and that's really the critical part about this amendment. With that, I know Mike Allmendinger from Block Nine Partners is ready to make a little bit of a presentation.
Mike, you have a presentation? I think the public was asking what's going on in this project, and I think you're going to come forth and tell us what's going on.
on over the last twelve months and also what needs to happen for us in the next, you know, seven to ten months for this project to move forward. So, first of all, we would maybe just like to share some of the progress with the partnerships that we've continued to develop with them amongst the community. You know, there's RDOs a part of the project along with Kilborn Group. There have been multiple meetings with City of Fargo to coordinate with staff and all the different, many departments on how to plan for this project, for a successful project, including Fargo Parks, US Bank, who is the existing landowner of this property, and how this is, project would impact them. You know, what does their business look like during construction, after construction, and then the downtown community and the downtown Fargo Partnership as well. We have, as we look back, you know, over the last twelve months to look at, you know, what has, what has this team been focused on? You know, we've had, you know, well over forty meetings with many different departments in, within the City of Fargo to plan for this project and, and, and set ourselves up for success when we start construction. Fargo Parks, there's been, there's been kind of great development with Fargo Parks as well around operation of the plaza space. That was an idea that we presented when we brought this project to you the first time, and, and we were in a good position to be continuing those discussions with, with Fargo Parks. We've, in fact, have hired the, the operators of the Main Street Square in Rapid City, South Dakota, to help us, to help us basically create, you know, draft and create an operating agreement between, you know, between the Block Nine Partnership and the Fargo Parks to, to set us up for, for good success in the operations of that plaza. In addition, we've had multiple meetings with our current landowner, US Bank Downtown Partnership, neighbors adjacent to this property, to keep them informed on what project, what construction would look like. This next slide is, you know, kind of small print, but it is a summary of, you know, where will cranes be operated? Will, where, where will the deliveries be happening on site? How do we maintain parking around the neighborhood? How do we keep pedestrian activity, you know, safe, but also, also active within this project? We, we are working with Mortensen Construction, who is a very experienced contractor, you know, working in urban downtown environments, to help us, again, plan for the best project once, once construction starts. So, as, maybe as a summary for the progress we've been making, when we started this project in May of two thousand sixteen, when we talked to you last about this, we had a, we were proposing a project of ninety-five million dollars, and now we are at a hundred and seventeen million dollars. We have, we have over fifty-two primary partners on this project between design team, construction team, financing, the legal team to, 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 to complete the pre-construction work needed on this project. That logs up to over twenty thousand hours of work into this, over a hundred legal documents, and the Block Nine Partners have, to date, invested over five million dollars into this pre-construction work. I mean, it's a significant amount of money that we are putting into the, you know, really strong planning for this project. So, when we start, it's successful for the city, it's successful for the Block Nine Partners. What we are, what we are asking for tonight is, we're not asking for any financial changes to the developer agreement that we have in place with the City of Fargo. We, the, there's no, there's, there are no additional asks that we're, that we're, they're asking from the City of Fargo from now until we do break ground on this project. So, we're not asking for any funds to, to happen early before we break ground. There have, there have been no tax dollars spent to date on this project. There's been a lot of staff time into the project, which has been, you know, which has been very helpful for the planning stages, but there's been no, you know, no funds spent on this project. And the Block Nine Partners will continue to spend money into our pre-construction work and planning work if we, if, if we move forward after tonight. So, an update on some other items here. If we do a quick snapshot of designed, design updates, when we presented this project back in May of two thousand sixteen, this was the plaza, early plaza designs that we're talking about. And since we have studied many components of this, you know, very important community plaza for downtown Fargo, we are, we, we're really excited about the potential of this and the number of events that can happen for, you know, residents within the City of Fargo and the community in downtown. So, there, so we studied multiple concepts, and this is the most recent version of what that plaza looks like. I think the exciting part of it is that, you know, with the planning and organization of this, there, we, we anticipate, you know, well over a hundred events that first year happening in the plaza, with a goal of over two hundred and fifty happening a year after it's operating for a few years. And this is space that will be available for public to rent, for private events, and also available for public with live, you know, live music or live, live events on the stage, ice skating rink, and, and also the, the, the fountains for families to come to downtown Fargo. The next one would be the garage and the parking garage. This, these were the early, the, the, this is the early design work in the parking garage. You know, we've continued to develop it. We've, we've developed where the coordination is happening for vehicle access, US Bank, US Bank existing drive-throughs, and then working with the City of Fargo for traffic studies as well. And currently, this is the most current design of that parking garage. These design, the construction documents are very, very close to being completed on, on the full set for that parking garage. For the building design, we previously had nineteen floors with an eighty-eight key hotel and eighteen to twenty-two residential units. We now have eighteen-story building, similar amount of square feet. We are proposing to have, have one additional floor be hotel and one less floor of residential condos. And this is the most current design
Ooh.
of the building itself. So, we're
It's starting to look like New York. I'm a little worried.
Yeah. It's a, we're, we're, we're excited about the mixed uses. The, the building program is still the same uses as before. It has six uses, which does create, you know, kind of this incredible amount of complexity and financing with our banks and going through that process. That is the process that we're in right now. So, for us to move forward, you know, what, the milestones that we've identified for this project, you know, we are not in a position to, to break ground this fall. So, we need to, we need to solidify the banking partner for this project. We've been in discussions with them for some time, but we do need to solidify the banking partner. And, and then we start the appraisal process. That's going to allow us to close, you know, on the project with the financing package and that bank. And then we, you know, and then we would have the ability to award the contracts for construction and prepare for the pre-construction staging work as well. And as we looked, as we look at all of that, that puts us at, you know, seven to ten months' worth of work to be set up for what we would consider, you know, the best planning we can do before we break ground for this project, which think it's important for the neighborhood, you know, and all the adjacent neighbors around this property, the City of Fargo, you know, us as the partners, financing the project and making the investment into this property. So, with that, I think, I know that there are, there are two amendments that we are asking for your consideration tonight that would allow this project to happen.
Any questions of Mike? Can I have a motion, please?
Eric, do you want to recite the amendments?
Well, the, the amendment is a, a two-page document. Just, there's this, I'm not sure what you meant by two amendments. There, you, I think you might be talking about sort of the extension of the dates in two
Yeah, oh, yes, yes.
areas. It's, it's a single amendment.
Moment is, a motion is, I move to approve the Fifth Amendment to Development Agreement between the City Fargo and Block Nine Partners LLC, as presented, Eric Johnson.
I'll make that motion. Just want to clarify that one versus the two, so.
Okay.
There's a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Gary?
Maybe Jim Gilmore is the best first to ask for this one, but as the project cost goes up, does that not mean that our commitment as a city goes up? We're giving a percent of property tax back as an incentive. So, if they are, if the building is of more value, would that not mean we have a higher amount the city is on the hook for?
If the, you know, if the building is, is higher or lower, that'll all be determined by the city assessor, and so, you know, if it costs more, they may value it at, at a higher amount. You know, with this agreement, the, the TIF proceeds plus money from the developers using to pay, pay off the bonds. So, the city's bond level is fifteen million. That's a hard, you know, for construction, plus any bond fees, interim, some of the interim financing. So, that number will be higher than fifteen million. But, as far as the amount that goes to the developer, it's limited to fifteen million regardless of the size of the project.
But the TIF and the developer are paying off the cost of the bond. It just means the bond to be paid off sooner. If Commissioner Gary's question is, if you have higher value, it should be more tax goes to the TIF, correct?
Not just the TIF. So, the TIF, that's fine. Fifty, it's maximum fifteen. That answers that question. But, they're getting a Renaissance Zone exemption on part of this building, getting a pilot on part of this building. Both of those exemptions at one time have a hundred percent exemption from whatever the property tax value is. We were assuming a ninety-five billion dollar value on that building when we were, when we were presented with this last year. Now, we're assuming at least one hundred and seventeen million, maybe a hundred and twenty, maybe a hundred and thirty. Who knows? So, as that number keeps going up, it would be logical that our, our amount that we are exempting goes up. Is that true?
It, it all depends on what the assessor values it at.
Jim, it's a straightforward question. It's a straightforward question. If the amount we were assuming is ninety-five million dollars, if we're now assuming a hundred and twenty million dollars, we are going to give more incentives than we had planned on before, correct?
If the assessor values it at a higher level.
Thank you.
They'll pay zero on the properties regardless of what the assessor has it valued at.
Yes, me.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
I mean, if I, if I could just follow up on that, I guess, I think the part, you know, as I would ask the commission to think about for that or consider for that is that, you know, the program is not changing for this building. It's not like we're adding additional floors to the building. We're actually removing a floor and the cost is going up. Time is, time is not on our side for this either. The longer we wait, the higher the construction goes up. We're not asking for an additional years of, you know, of, you know, the pilot or the TIF. So, I think it goes to show that, you know, why we're motivated to break ground on this as soon as we can.
Commissioner Pepcorn?
Okay, here's the key thing. What are we getting in return for agreeing to this? We need to get something from them. This is a business deal. Those guys are expert businessmen. And if we're just going to do this unilaterally, we are fools. We need to get something in return, whether it's, who knows what. There's, we have a lot of things. I have a laundry list to work on, but for us to just unilaterally give an extension, that's not good, that's not good business dealings. I, first of all, it's a great project. I am in support of it. They're obviously great people, but I'm telling you, man, these guys are sharks in a complimentary way, and they would love to get a free line of credit for seventeen million dollars, open-ended, which is what they have now. We would be fools to do that. We'll say, sure, we'll do this. What will you give us in return? That's what we have to do. That's why I will not be supporting this. I will support it when we come back and say, here's what we want. Boom, 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 and then we'll extend it. That, that's my comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Gary?
I just want to make the point clear that in the slide when it says, no change to financial ask for this project, the very fact that the building is going to cost more because of the delays is a new financial ask. We're granting an extension. Therefore, we know it'll be more expensive, which is a change in financial ask. So, I want everyone to be aware of that, that the terms are changing, and we're asked to accept it again and again and again, five, six, seven times.
Commissioner Grinberg, did you have something? No?
Well, I appreciate the comments, and I, I look at this from a standpoint, we're not changing anything to what the prior commission has agreed to. You know, in, in the world of construction, prices go up. So, I mean, it's natural to assume that a year ago, and where we sit here today, the costs are going to go up. All we're doing is extending the bonding period for this project to, to continue forward. We're not debating incentives. I know there's divided opinions about incentives at this desk, but we're not, we're not, we're not addressing that tonight. And the fact that the collections on the existing property are miniscule compared to what the return when this comes off the tax, or off the incentives to back to the city. So, you know, how do you, how you want to calculate that return on investment is, you know, it's proven through the but-for test. Again, divided opinion on the but-for test, prior commissions took action on. But, I think it's incumbent on us as leaders of the city is, what's, what's the role of government? It's to provide stable, predictable environments. And so, for us to renege on this commitment tonight would not only, in my opinion, probably devastate this project, but what signal does it send to other developers about projects that are appropriate for our action, whether it's incentives or other public-private partnerships that might be down the road? So, I think we need to be careful of the decisions we make tonight about what the message that it sends, irregardless of our individual opinions on incentives or value or return on investment. Because this project, when it's fully operational, will have profound effect on our community.
Commissioner Strand, anything?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. It, it's, it's no secret that when the previous commission was considering this, I had publicly expressed concerns about the policy that was being utilized that was a pilot's, pilot incentive policy, that it, it wasn't, by my understanding, and I think a general understanding, it wasn't allowable technically to have this project qualify for a pilot. But, but since then, this commission, at the advice of the Tax Exempt Review Committee, has revisited that policy with, and, and has modified it such that now it does qualify. And, and that's, that was my biggest concern, is that policy allows you to move forward and it, and it allows it. So, I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm not inclined to want to turn upside down a previous commission's decision. You know, that's, I'm not inclined to do that. My, my job, I believe, is to help make the decision right. It's not whether it was all right or wrong back then, but it's to help make it right. And, and to me, it seems logical that if we were to make this right, we would give them breathing room to accomplish the tasks needed to pull off this sizable of a project and complex of a project. So, so I'm okay with giving you the breathing room. I'm, I'm okay with the previous commission's decision and, and, and that they had made, and I intend to honor that with the spirit of all of us partnering together going forward to, to make it right and make it work to the best of the community, for the, for the greater good.
Commissioner Gary?
In, in all due respect to Commissioner Grinberg, this is changing the circumstances. We are extending this, which creates a situation where the project goes, gets more expensive. We are on the hook already for thirty million dollars for this project with TIF, Renaissance Zone and Pilot exemptions. If this goes on, if this gets delayed like it's planned to be, it'll be thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-five million dollars. We don't know. And that, to me, is exactly why, what the role of local government is, is not to play developer. We have a huge bag of money and no power as to how that project is done on a timeline. We, we have no power over that. So, it's a bad idea for us to do these things. This does create waves in the economy in Fargo. We don't know what's going to happen down there. Could another developer buy that property and do something with it? Well, we're on the hook for this already. So, I respectfully disagree. This is not a change. It is. And this is why, this is, this is patient zero as to why we shouldn't get involved in these kind of big projects.
Any other discussion?
Just one more thing. This is an opportunity for us. This is a business deal, and this is, it was extended. I, I don't recall any of these other extensions, but it's been five times. I don't recall any of the other ones, but it's an open-ended thing. So, so the developers, once they're approved, what's the rush? I, I think the mayor and I, when we voted on it, I, I assumed it was going to start last year. I, I, and I think, I can't recall exactly how that, but I mean, that was the impression, that it was going to start. And now it's a year and three months later, and we're giving them a, an extension without any penalty. It's like, what a sweet deal. And, and so, I, I think we are setting a precedent, and it's not a good one. And then, once again, I want to go back to this. This is an opportunity. This is, these are businessmen. This is a business deal. This is an opportunity for us to get some things back. That, we were very generous with our original thing, and I think this is an opportunity for us. If we don't, if we're outvoted, hey, it is what it is. But, I'm just, I just want you, everyone, to think about that, because that's what this is. This is business, and I think it's an opportunity for us, and I just hope we don't squander it.
So, the group came by, Mike, last week to talk all commissioners, just so the public understands, and a couple of things that we got out of that discussion is, there's three different partners in this project, and so the difficulty is to coordinate that with financial as well. In the hotel industry, we added five hundred new rooms to the City of Fargo, which has caused the vacancy rate to drop almost sixty-five percent in the City of Fargo and the oil booms here. So, a lot of moving parts have happened in this project, which we all have to be a little bit aware of. Project being ninety-eight million has exploded to one hundred and Project being 98 million has exploded to 118 million. Eventually, when they're paying taxes, that actually increases the tax base for Fargo, and a rising tide will increase the taxes in the downtown. Third element here is you're never going to get another $100 million project come to the City of Fargo. This is a very unusual project to begin with, and it's a lot of, of courage that the different corporate partners take in this particular project to make this happen. An extension is no different than what we've done on the bond. The bond covers the price of the parking ramp. We'll have a new parking ramp downtown in the plaza. And that's worth the same commitment we were before. Your partners have committed for more money into this particular project. The praise value may not be 118 million. It may be 75 or 80 million. It really depends upon, on the financial part of that. And it's just like us when we buy a house. When you buy a house, it's got a praise off of your mortgage, or you don't get a mortgage. So we're all going to be a little panting, hoping you guys get the mortgage so you can go ahead with this project. Your extension is not unreasonable for the climate of the finances in the world right now. Where we sit right now in Fargo is different than we sat two years ago when you brought the project to us. So I just wanted to bring that out, because your group did come, come, talk to all the commissioners and did explain the different variances behind it. So roll call vote, please.
Greenberg.
Aye.
Strand.
Was a motion.
Yes.
Gary.